So call to order the March 1st Hamilton County Council. Madam Utter, do I have, can you do a roll call?
Yes, Brad Beaver.
Here.
Mark Hall.
Present.
Amy Masalomani.
Present.
Ken Alexander.
Present.
Sue Mackey.
Present.
Tim Griffin.
Present.
Steve Nation.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Council Mackey, could you lead us in invocation and pledge?
Yes, please. Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here tonight to help make our community as great as possible. We ask that you be with our fellow servants, our public safety officers, as they do their work every day. We ask that for your guidance in our decisions this evening, and we ask that you bless our community as they go out into the world. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Everyone saw in the packet the minutes from the February 1st meeting.
So moved.
Second. I imagine that's for approval?
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, no carries. At this time, Madam Utter, we have items for public comments. Has anyone signed up?
No.
Okay. Is anyone from the audience here for a public comment? Seeing none, we'll continue on. Committee reports. President, I have, I guess, had a few. First item I'd just say is that I had the opportunity to be at the Hamilton County Soil and Water Annual Meeting and swore in one of their new members, and that was a lot of fun. If you ever have that chance, I will tell you that the Hamilton County Soil and Water Annual Meeting has the best food for an annual meeting that you're going to be in. So highly recommend. Heart healthy, probably not, but it was wonderful. Vice President?
I have nothing, sir.
Highway.
We have several items on the agenda that will be discussed later, but we did meet yesterday, and in addition to the items that we'll be discussing, we did have a discussion with Chris Pope with United Consulting, who was, gave us an update on the environment of bidding for contracts in our state and the country, actually. And so he gave us an update, and I know the Finance Committee's going to mention it in a minute, too, that many of our projects, as we go out for bid, are coming in significantly over estimates. And that is not unique to us, or even unique to the state. So we are working through those issues with the Highway Committee on prioritizing, along with the Council and the Commissioners, how we're going to move forward and get the needed improvements to our community infrastructure done. So we all, that is all, and the Finance Committee will probably update more.
Finance Committee.
Yeah, we had a meeting yesterday also, and we met with Mr. Pope. The main topic of discussion was 146 in Allisonville. We went over the majority of that in our work session. That's about the long and short of it. That took up the whole Finance meeting with just that.
Yes. All right, personnel.
We, we met, and there's several 144 amendments on the agenda, and we'll discuss them as they come up.
Anyone have any miscellaneous items to report? All right, seeing none, unfinished business, so we'll move on to table business. Resolution, item B, Resolution CC 02012023.2, that's our work, our rules, correct?
Correct.
Do I have a motion to untable that?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Do I have a motion for approval for Resolution CC 02012023.2?
So moved.
Second.
So for comment, is that, just for my clarification, is that based on the discussion and comments that were addressed in our work session?
All the comments we've had over the last six months.
All right, thank you very much. All right.
Or is it a year, Steve?
It's more than that.
Motion to.
Just two months for me.
Just two months for town, so that's okay. All right, any other comments?
Is a motion.
To approve as amended.
As amended?
Yes.
My second.
So we have a second?
As amended, I will second.
Okay. Do I have a motion to, is that a motion to approve?
You already have it.
All right, thank you.
All the questions.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
New business. Do I have a motion to approve the vendor claims?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item B, request for approval of improvements to, for the Hamilton County Tourism. Brenda Maris is coming forward, and just for transparency purposes, can I have a motion to approve?
Well, would, no.
Yep, that was.
I have nothing.
Okay, for, so this, for my, for while she's getting ready, there is, I've been working with them on procurement for the, their new build-out, and I think they're going to talk about how they're, how they fund it with internal, with their own money that is received through their hotel tax.
My question is, what, so there's no financial impact to us, so you're asking for approval?
For them to allow them to spend money.
I just want to make sure I'm clear, because it's not.
Brenda, you can probably do a much better job of stating that.
It's a very good question.
It's not.
Especially since I don't think you were here, Amy, when in 2006, when we built or bought into the condominium complex that we're in in Carmel, the County Council at that point asked that the County Council owned that facility. They wanted to own that building. And what, there is a covenant on the building, should it ever be sold, that the money has to revert back to the Tourism Commission. But it is your building. We did pool, a bunch of attorneys got together and reviewed whether or not improvements to the billings could be billed as tenant, you know, leaseholder improvements, or whether we had to go out to public hearing. And because we're a nonprofit organization, and we'll be taking care of all the costs of the improvements and also depreciating all the improvements, it was determined that we could do these improvements without going out to public hearing. We did go out and get three bids on this project. I have Tina Rogers here, our Director of Resources, who's been managing the project and can probably speak more eloquently than me. But we went, if you remember, we had pondered selling the facility and then moving into a bigger facility pre-pandemic, but I think that taught us something. And so instead, we would like to renovate our current facility and stay in place probably a decade.
Brenda, just for, just for everyone's knowledge, for those that weren't on council at the time, we were talking in the neighborhood of your new building. What was that?
3.5, and that was, of course, 2017 and '18 numbers, and it was 3.5 million, but it was, and it was like 10,000, no, it was 10,000 square feet. We have 4,500 square feet. We are leasing about 600 square feet.
644 square feet.
Thank you, Tina. From PetCor, which we leased at one other time, and it would be, it would be integrated into this, and then we would get a leaseholder improvement deal from them and do like at least a four-year lease. But, and so what we'd like to do is, the first floor, we will, if you've ever been to our, we need to expand our conference room. It will be like about 50% bigger. The second, and then we will continue, we do a lot of load-in, load-out for events, and we host, we, yeah, do services for over 110 events a year. And so then the second floor will be the quiet floor. It'll have a conference room. It'll have a room, should a future CEO want an office. It'll have a lot of lockers, and that's our quiet workspace. And then the third floor, we're going to, we're going to add so many small conference rooms, because that's how we work now. We tend to work hybrid. We work from home. We have a lot of salespeople out and about, and when we're together is when we want to meet, but we needed to have four different meetings at the same time. And so we really thought this through. Our staff is fine with hotel desks, that's what they call them, which I think is super fun, because it's our industry. And, and I think it'll be a long-term wise investment. We were asked by our Tourism Commissioner, Jack Russell, one of your appointments, to get an appraisal on the building for posterity's sake. And it appraised at a million. We feel that the street value is higher than a million.
Well, just, well, there's, there's complications to our appraisal. This is a very weird ownership of a building. They own space that does not have restrooms.
Yeah.
The restrooms are part of the PetCor portion.
We have a three or four assigned parking lot spaces, too, so that was a little bit of a, that let lower the value of the build, the appraised value of the building. But we've had many people offer to buy our building from us, so we think it would sell quickly. And that, we have, we have an interesting commonary maintenance agreement with the City of Carmel for restrooms and the PetCor.
And just.
So what we're asking is, we have the funds set aside. We've worked with the Tourism Commission to allocate funds, and we would like to have this completed by late summer, early fall. We are, we are going to go to our board on Friday pending your approval and do the final contract.
Can I ask why this came to us today instead of ahead of time? Like, because there's obviously planning that's been happening, right, and conversations that have occurred.
I should have said that to you earlier. I thought about that. I'm sorry. I should have sent it.
Because I don't have an issue with it, but it's also one of those where there's clearly been work done.
It's a lot of information. Yes, I apologize.
And just for everyone's benefit, the 3.5 number, as you look at construction costs in that vertical space, pre-pandemic to now, it's at a minimum 40% increase in costs. So you'd probably be looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of $5.5 million or more.
We have had two members of the Tourism Commission on this work for, work study for us, two members of board, and also Ken, as our council representative. So he has been there and really provided great guidance and counsel.
I wasn't, I was there to help. I was not there in a committee perspective.
Not in terms of help, but really.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thanks. Thanks, Brad.
So, so I understand the motion, the motion to approve and allow them to move forward?
Yep. They have the money.
I, I know. I'm just saying.
Brenda, you're spending cash, or you're spending this out of future revenue?
It's, it's a little bit of both. We are well ahead of schedule already for this year, and so unless we have another pandemic, let's all knock on wood.
Oh, yeah.
We're going to be.
But you're not incurring any interest expense, do you?
We, the reason we have the cash is because we under, we were so conservative in forecasting, because we had no idea. And because, and I mean this with all sincerity, you gave us that ARPA money, and we advertised last year, and we had a great year. We, and we drove weekday leisure travel, which was a really exciting thing to see. So that's, and then we budgeted conservatively for this year, too. And so that's why we were able to do all these big things. So thank you very much for that.
I, I know that you have a meeting coming up, but after that, I'll share the, the information that you sent out for that board meeting with the rest of the council, and if you want, I could be happy sharing it out.
You're welcome to see it. It's all, I mean, we, we got three bids. We took what we felt was the most reasonable and responsible bid, bidder. We didn't have, it's a Hamilton County company. We liked that idea.
I, I was referring to your hotel and the information.
Oh, yeah. I'm glad to show you our case reports. Right.
Well, that was just the, I think that that shows that we're exceeding expectations again.
Call question.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the support.
Thank you, ladies.
All right, moving on to additional appropriations, and I'm going to open the public hearing.
There you go.
Item number one, we have an assessor amendment 144.
So moved.
Second.
So we have the, just a quick one?
This is just for the Assessor's Office requesting approval to hire above entry for two individuals. Actually, one individual and the other one is for a $500 increase because they had got their Certified Indiana Assessor Appraiser Award.
Any other, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on.
Just so everybody knows, when they get that certification, we give them. It's kind of the, do this, get that.
We're glad they are doing it.
All right. We have two Commissioner's additionals. Do you want me to handle this separately? They're listed as one item, but I can handle them separately. All right, it's together for 140,000. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The first one with regards to 110,000 has to do with the portion of appropriate reimbursement for liability premium, insurance liability premium. Steve can attest to the 30,000.
And the second is monies we received back from the Hamilton County Community Foundation, and it's now they're asking for the use of it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A quarter mission, Administration 144 amendment.
So moved.
Second.
This is a favor, requesting a favorable recommendation to reclassify title receptionist to a receptionist slash probate clerk.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. ISS additional for 29,420.
So moved.
Second.
This is in regards to basically the picking up of old copiers. It was done last year, and now they're basically wanting their money in order to purchase the replacement copiers.
You got a motion?
Yep. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Prosecutor 144 amendments.
So moved.
Second.
This, this is a title change from office manager to office manager paralegal and adjusting to the, a different level comment.
And then they did, Barb talked with Sheena today, and they are removing Jennifer, is that Sheercliff?
Sheercliff, it looks like.
Off, off of that request.
Jennifer Sheercliff should be removed.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry.
Can I have a amendment to the motion?
I guess, because they're all encompassing, because there's multiples.
Yeah.
It's amended with that removal. I'm going to state that. That's what I'm saying, who made the motion?
Okay. And then the Jennifer Sheercliff is one, the other requests are for two deputy prosecuting attorneys hiring above the minimum, and one of those two are being removed.
Right. And so I will, I will.
We still have a motion and a second on from the first one, so we need to.
Well, but I will take that as a friendly amendment to my motion.
To remove.
To remove.
Jennifer Sheercliff.
Sure.
From the discussion.
Any, and you do have, and that was your motion. Who is the second on that?
I did.
Or do you?
Are you amendable to a friendly amendment?
I am amendable to the direction. It's friendly.
Okay. Any other comments, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I just want to say that I read the minutes from the personnel, and I want to congratulate you guys for the work that you're doing on the personnel committee. I can see that you're paying attention, and it's really helpful.
Okay.
Better than a poll.
Sheriff 144 amendments.
This.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
This is to hire above the minimum based on knowledge, skills, and previously Hamilton County experiences. This is for Stephanie Ruckles.
Aren't there multiples? Sorry. Hold on.
There was a couple.
Weren't there movements? There's movements as a result, right?
There's movements. I think it's separate.
Nope, they're all in one, the amendments.
Oh, they're right there. They are. And then the next page, there's several. This is for a promotion to, from Assistant Jail Commander to Captain and Division Commander, and that would, promotion will follow the salary ordinance. And then there's two other corrections officers that are being promoted to Assistant Jail Commanders, and they are going above the minimum for the job because they, what they currently make in their current job, it would not give them much of a promotional, a pay increase. So they are doing, they are questioning above the minimum for that, and.
So do, all this stays within the sheriff's budget?
Yes, it's all within his budget.
Under?
Yes.
We already, have we had the vote?
We have the motion, and we have the motion.
Any other, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Item B, Fund 1138 Cumulative Capital Development Highway requesting 1.5 million.
This.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve?
Second.
This is for the Belford Bridge at Geis Park. They went out for bid on it. It was unrealistically high. unrealistically high, so they are rebidding it. But there are 2,773,800 of federal funds awarded for this project, so we've got quite a bit of money coming from the feds. So we are adjusting the amounts appropriation, and it's going out to rebid on March 12.
As a comment, the item B and item D are both apply to that. So it's actually $3 million more that we're putting back in to cover that overs. But we've been, right now, it would be the first part of it out of CCD, and the second one would be out of motor vehicle highway. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item C, Fund 1171, Major Bridge Fund requesting $10 million.
Mr. President, I motion to combine items C1 and 2 for discussion.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. President, motion to suspend the rules related to C1 and 2.
All right, and it's to approve it on a first reading?
Correct.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Mr. President, may I have a motion to approve items C1 and 2?
How much is that amount, Amy?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
What was it?
10.
10 million dollars.
That is correct, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
10 million dollars.
Correct.
It's all part of our 146.
That'd be 10 million dollars.
Seven zeros.
Okay. Any other discussion? All, I'll, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item D, Fund 1176 Motor Vehicle Highway requesting 1.5 million dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Just for clarification, this is the other half of the item for Belfort Bridge. Do I have any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item, Fund 1222 Communications 144 Amendments.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Does anyone have a...
This is a new position for the Communications 911 Center. It's a Finance Director of Finance. This came to the Personnel Committee. There was discussions about the order of the process, so I'm calling, would like to, if Sheena Randall's here, if she could explain why, the reason, and we all heard it, but just so the public has heard it, why it's went to Personnel before it came to Council, because it's a new position, and she'll explain the details, so everyone knows. And then Mr. Hubbs is here to explain the need for the new position.
Good evening. Thank you very much. When we first began looking at this position, Mr. Hubbs approached HR and was going to reclassify a Communications Officer position, and those reclassifications go to Personnel and then back to Council. We crafted a draft of the job description, forwarded it to our consultants, and it came back as an executive position, which was a lot more money than a, just a general Communications Officer beginning salary. So there was discussion about potentially a kind of reclassifying one position, abolishing another, and that was what we were bringing to the committee. And then when the committee met, we had discussion, and Mr. Hubbs stated that he could pay for this position out of the lit funds and not abolish to dispatch positions for Communications Officer. We felt that recruitment and making sure that his staffing needs were met would be beneficial to the county, and so that's why the Personnel Committee gave a favorable recommendation following all of those steps.
But understanding that once it changed, right, technically it should have come back. I understand that Dawn, I'm sorry, Robin and Yushina said it should go back to Council prior to it being committed, but in the future, and you get a little bit of a breather, because this is kind of your first time, we'll say, Mr. Hubbs. If any new positions outside of budget discussions at that time need to come to Council before going to Personnel.
Mr. Lo, I apologize.
That's okay.
And it won't happen again. I promise you that.
One thing, just, just to throw this out to you, I realize that the tax structure that you're working, your funding structure is complicated. It's probably why you want a Financial Officer. I would just say, as the County Council has a financial advisor, we hire him, contract employee. I don't know if you ever give that a consideration, but I know that the finances are tough.
Yes.
And, and I'm not sure there are other guys besides the one we hired out there that can actually wade through it, but just food for, food for thought.
Yes, I appreciate it. And this position will be doing more than just lit funding. We have nearly 100 Personnel. I think we're the second largest county agency in manpower, so, but yes, advice taken, sir, and I'll...
Good enough.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 2100, Adult Supplement Probation requesting $400,000.
So moved.
Second.
If you remember last month, this is the request with regards to furniture, if I'm not mistaken, I apologize that, hold on one second. I have too many papers. It is the furniture for adult probation. And then we had a provision on the agenda for this month to appropriate.
You got words of wisdom, Madonna?
Always.
Thank you.
We're way under that amount.
Okay.
Thank you.
We like that.
Yeah, thank you.
Wonderful. Do I have a, do I have a motion and a second? So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madonna.
All right. Item 4814, Lit's Revenue Refunding Bonds Proceeds Requesting $24,401.65.
These are, second, these are inter-fund transfers. It's not new money. It's moving it from one account to another.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item 4815, the 2021 GO Refunding and Project Fund requesting $72,336.17.
So moved.
Second, same thing again.
Yep. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next item, Fund 4817, GO Bond Series 2022A requesting $20,220, I'm sorry, 20 million, 220,000.
What was that number again, Ken? Was that 20 million?
Sometimes when you see those comments, you get a little scared. 20 million, 220,827.60.
Seven.
Second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and last one, Fund 4814, GO Bond Series 2022B requesting $5,564,959.45.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're into the grant appropriations. Do I have...
Mr. President, motion to, to combine items K1 through 7.
Second.
All right. A motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Mr. President, approval of items K1 through 7.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Announcements. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Closing panel hearing. From the Sheriff's Department, any comments?
No, I think you...
Counsel attorney.
Come to the group.
Madam Auditor.
I have nothing.
Okay. With that, we are adjourned.